Good evening, everyone. I would like to start the CETA regular meeting and call to, call to order with a roll call, please.
Board member Van Gordon, board member Weber.
Here.
Board member Mo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rodley.
Here.
Board member Blackwell.
Here.
Board member Doyle.
Here.
Chair Pictionary.
Here, and board member Van Gordon's excuse.
Okay, and board member Levall.
Here.
First item, please.
First item is the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Call for vote, please.
Uh, board member Van Gordon, board member Weber.
Yes.
Board member Mo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rodley.
Yes.
Board member Blackwell.
Yes.
Board member Doyle.
Aye.
Chair Pictionary.
Yes.
And board member Levall.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with one excuse. Next item.
Next item is business from the audience.
We have, let me go ahead and make the announcements, or do we have anybody that's gonna be here to speak?
You can make the announcement.
Okay. Please limit comments to three minutes. Request to speak cards, the request to speak cards are available at the entrance of City Hall or the council chambers. Please present cards to the city quarter. Speakers are not, may not yield their time to others, and the board cannot engage in discussion or conversation with individuals providing comment or testimony. Is there anybody from the audience or virtually?
Uh, we have no hands for this item.
Okay. See you, Nolan. Uh, next item, please.
Next item is the seat of board officers election. Ally Camp is here for this item.
Good evening, Ally.
Hi, CETA board. Good to see you all. Got my big stack of papers per usual. Okay. So our bylaws for the CETA board indicate annual elections for the positions of chair, vice chair, and secretary. Uh, your AIS includes descriptions of each of these positions. Uh, your bylaws are attached to your packet, and a current roster is also included with term dates. Board members may serve consecutive terms in officer positions, and today we are here to um, elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary for the 2024 year.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for chair.
Um, I'd like to make a motion for Corey Rodley as chair.
Alright, I'm sorry, nomination.
Okay, nomination.
Anyone else? Any other nominations? Okay, so nominations don't require a second, I don't believe.
That's correct, but that's fine.
Okay, so uh, all those in favor of that nomination? Signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Nomination is unanimous. Row chair. Already? Okay, fine. It's all yours. I'll take, I'd accept a uh, like to accept a nomination for vice chair. Anyone with a nomination? Go ahead, Commissioner Levall.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Councilor Victoria Doyle for vice chair, please.
Okay. Any other nominations? Like to call for a, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The nomination carries unanimously. Like to entertain a nomination for secretary.
I nominate Michelle Weber to be secretary at CETA board.
Any other nominations? Okay, let's uh, signify by, I guess I was gonna call it a vote. We don't need to do, vote by aye.
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 Any opposed? Excellent, so we now have installed all three board officers, and I'm backing out.
You can sit by me, Joe.
Before we move on with the microphone, I just wanna appreciate um, a board member and chair Pictionary and getting to serve along with him for the past year. Um, we've, we've done a lot of work, and we were talking with Ally about this. We've, we've had more meetings this year and done more work with CETA than in probably forever, and it's been great. So thank you very much. Thank you. Next item, please.
Uh, next item is new business. Uh, item number one is a CETA residential relocation. Sam Kelly Quatroki is here for this item.
Good evening, CETA. Uh, I'm here to, so my name is Sam Kelly Quatroki. I'm your legislative analyst, interactive analyst. Uh, so I'm here seeking a motion to adopt or not adopt resolution uh, to enact the CETA relocation, residential relocation plan. Just some quick ground setting for folks who are tuning in for the first time tonight. Uh, CETA has been acquiring land in Glenwood for some years now. We've wrapped up that process. Some of that land did include tenants. Uh, per the Glenwood Urban Renewal Plan and Oregon statute, we are required to provide relocation assistance to those tenants. Uh, we've been talking about this a little bit for the past few meetings now, but we staff feel now the time is right to begin relocation. Uh, master planning is at a point where we feel there will not be single-family homes like this in the riverfront area. Um, relocations are pretty uh, well-known process. Nothing new with the reinvent here. CETA did uh, contract with Universal Field Services, and so I brought Leslie here to my right to kinda give a better breakdown of what that's like. Uh, Universal's done quite a lot of work in this area before. Um, of the eight tenants we have, it's looking at roughly about $290,000 relocation costs, averaging about $36,000 per tenant. Right now, these are just estimates. Um, Leslie and her team provided interviews, researched the homes, figured out who was there, any sort of special circumstances they may need. Um, attachment two is your resolution, and that resolution includes the entire plan uh, with some things redacted for protection uh, of the folks living in Glenwood. Unless there are any immediate burning questions, I would pass it over to Leslie to give us a little bit of a breakdown of relocation, and then this plan specifically.
Board member Levall.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just have, I didn't read that, and forgive me if I missed it in there. Um, two things, is there a cap on what we're gonna spend? And two, um, on the relocation plan, if someone decides that, that like, A, we can't find them a place, or B, they decide to move out of the area, is there a one-time settlement figure that is available?
Excellent, yeah. Uh, there is not a cap uh, on this currently. Part of that depends on what we can find for folks. Uh, part of relocation, let me, Leslie, have more, she wants to give on this, is a rent supplement or a cost differential. And so depending on where they end up and what those rates look like, there's a little more flexibility in that. I don't know, Leslie, if you want to speak to the second part of that question, this is your uh, on a button. Yeah.
Second part of the question was what? Yeah. No. No, Ian, um, there, well, I'm gonna go back to what Kelly just said. There is no cap. It's whatever it takes to move somebody, and they can move anywhere they want and get the relocation benefits. The, the federal regulations say you pay to move them up to 50 miles. Uh, if they choose to move to Texas, we still pay up to 50 miles for their, the move itself. But they get to, if they rent something else that's within the parameters of the relocation's plan, the relocation study, they get that money as soon as they rent something. So there is not, relocation is not a negotiable thing. It's what's actionable, reasonable, and necessary. So um, in the regulations, there is a $7,200 maximum rent supplement, unless you can't find something, and then it goes into housing of last resort, and there's no, no cap on that. It's whatever it takes to move them into a replacement house.
So I just wanna be clear if I can. If, if they move to Texas, and we pay for the first 50 miles of moving expenses, and then are we still uh, gonna be paying for up to 42 months of rent differential, even if they're in Texas?
Yep.
And that pays out over time. There's not a one-time payout for that.
It's a one-time payout.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Unless you wanted, I mean, you have the option of keeping track of where they are and getting a rent supplement payments every month for 42 months. But most agencies wanna just go ahead, give them the rent supplement. Once they sign a lease somewhere or uh, rent sub, or they can purchase. And that's the other option they have. They can purchase a replacement house. They can use that rent supplement as a down payment. It all has to go to the replacement house.
And is that something that your firm tracks, or is that something that Sam's gonna add to his play over time for the next four years?
We take care of it until um, they are relocated.
Right.
So once they're relocated and have their benefits, um, and um, have claimed everything that they're entitled to, then, then we, Sam doesn't, or Kelly doesn't have to worry about it. I don't have to worry about it. You don't have to worry about it. So, there's, there's four different types of relocation payments. So the first is a commercial, like an industrial, non-residential. Then there's an owner-occupant relocation benefit. There's a tenant benefit, and then there's personal property relocation. And we're just looking at tenant benefits here. So under relocation, and it's, all this falls under the Uniform Relocation Act. It's a federal highway administration program. Um, but all the federal agencies follow this Uniform Act. So the tenant benefits, first one is advisory assistance. Full-time advisory assistance until they're moved, and that's someone from my group, if we're doing the relocation, it's either me or an agent. Someone's helping them through the whole process. Finding a house, arranging for moving, filing the claims, um, getting their final check. So that's the first benefit that they are entitled to. The second is that rent supplement. So what we have to do is find a replacement property that is uh, good or better than what they have, at least, at least as good, if not better. So if they're in a one-bedroom, one-bathroom, bathroom house, and we cannot find one in this area that's available and is decent, safe, and sanitary, then we move up to a two-bedroom. Start looking for two-bedroom houses. So that's, you know, it has to be comparable, but it has to be at least as good, if not better. So we calculate the difference between what they're getting, what they're paying for rent, and their utilities, and then what that replacement comparable is. And we usually look for several, because they go fast. Um, but we pick one, compute that benefit, and then we go and meet with them and present that to them. So then our process becomes finding a place that they can, we have to, we have to move quick, because rentals do not stay on the market. And one, as one of the tenants explained to me when we were meeting with them, they'll, they'll be like the sixth or seventh applicant as soon as that advertisement hits the paper, or the internet, or wherever they're looking. So we have to move fast. You have to approve it. When we do the calculation, you have to approve it real quick, and we have to go out there and try to secure a place. They don't have to take the place that we're, we've found. They can choose anything they want. As long as it's decent, safe, and sanitary. If it's more expensive, we've capped already what they're entitled to, so they can pay the difference. If it's less expensive, then we recalculate. So it's, it's fairly easy to move tenants. I was telling Kelly just a little while ago, it's, you know, uh, somebody that's attached to their home, moving a resident, owner-occupant is more difficult, but a tenant usually is not tied to that location unless they've been there for a long, long time. Um, but trying to find and help these people get moved is usually pretty easy, unless they have um, poor credit, uh, or they've got a criminal background. There is something in there, you know, that uh, a landlord will not accept them. Then it takes extra work on our agents' parts to try to get them into those houses. And sometimes we have to move on to a different house, because the landlord can refuse. So um, what we do a lot of times is pay some of that rent supplement down on, on that rental, so that the landlord is feeling secure that they're gonna get their money. But um, so then, then we help them with the moving. And we, they can either move themselves or go with a commercial mover. Commercial mover will pack them, move them, unpack them if they need it, or they can um, pack and move themselves and get reimbursed that way. So, you know, it's, for tenants, like I said, it's fairly easy. They usually don't resist moving, and the people that we've talked to are very pleasant. They all understand what we were discussing with them. Some of them wanna buy a house. They wanna use the rent supplement. We didn't give them any dollars, but we kinda explained the process to them. Um, so they can figure, a lot of them are pretty sharp, um, could figure out that there could be a sizable rent supplement. So um, I think, I think you'll have happy movers. I don't think there'll be a lot of resistance. Hardest part is sometimes relocating people with pets. Cause typically, we aren't required to move pets. But um, we always try to find relocation or replacement housing that allows for pets, cause that's like part of your family, so. Um, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Very quickly, it's, like I said, it's, it's something we enjoy doing, because usually it gets people into a better situation. And sometimes they become, tenants become homeowners, and there's a lot of, a lot of benefit to that, to them, and to the community, I think. So.
Thank you, Leslie.
Yeah.
Is there, and I think you went into your, overall, that wasn't just an answer to, or remember Levall, cause I think, you know, that's a very long answer, but I think it was, you went into your presentation. Are there any additional questions or comments, Leslie? All right.
Deming people. This is not condemnation. It's a very expensive program, so that we're not condemning them, condemning them. It costs a lot of money. That's, that's part of urban renewal, trying to open up an area, and so that's paid for, but condemnation is not part of this program.
Yeah, and a lot of people get really nervous about the thought of condemnation, cause they see a yellow's tag across their house that you can't cross the door, and they don't understand what the condemnation process is. But you already own all those properties, so there's no condemnation involved.
Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
We do need a motion for the
Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. Uh, I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the Glenwood Riverfront relocation plan, and it's authorizing the city manager designated to issue relocation benefits to eligible tenants pursuant to the plan.
Second. All right, let's do a roll call, please.
Board member Van Gordon. Board member Weber.
Yes.
Board member Mo.
Yes.
Chair Rodley.
Yes.
Board member Blackwell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Doyle.
Aye.
Board member Pictionary.
Yes.
And board member Levall.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. All right, next item, please.
Next item under old business is item number one, staff response to chair request, developer support from CETA. This is a no-action item, uh, information only, and Ally Camp is here for this item.
Hi, CETA board. Um, I am here because in November, past chair Pictionary requested a report of financial support that CETA had provided to projects since July of 2013. Your board briefing memorandum contains a section on how to read the data. Um, I hope you had a chance to digest that before dump, jumping into the data table. Um, I just wanna call out a couple of things to help you through the data. Um, this data only includes CETA funds. It includes things like CETA, CETA SDC program expenses, grants, loans, and investments on behalf of a project for infrastructure, business support, or property acquisition. Does not include city funds. Um, drilling down by project or individual recipient is a little bit challenging, so I just wanna explain some of the data in the table before answering any questions. Um, for recipients, uh, they were identified by using the property owner indicated on building permits for the SDC program applications. Of recipients for other avenues of support were identified through invoices, project history, meeting minutes, or agreements for purchase, sale, lending, or grants. Um, next up, specifics to the site address. Projects are defined by their project site address, not by the name of the project. Uh, this address is typically what was submitted as part of a building permit or a project description, but some projects stretch across multiple tax lots, so for simplicity's sake, your data table includes one address. Um, I just wanna note that some site addresses don't specify unit or floor, so whenever you see a repetition of an address in that list, it might count for something bigger than what the ground floor address counts for. Um, and then just another note on recipients too. Uh, projects may have multiple LLCs involved throughout the duration. Um, so again, difficult to track recipients over time, but I think the map is a nice complement to the data table, cause we can't see where projects geographically have been invested in over time. Um, couple of unique ones to call out for y'all. Um, number eight is special on your table. Uh, number eight is something called a covered expense during the construction of the project. A utility line needed to be undergrounded, and CETA moved to pay for that. Um, another special one, uh, mostly for new board members, is number 35. Number 35 is a recipient for the CETA Business Loan Program. CETA administered one loan to Swallow Till Spirits for that. Um, and then finally, number 42 was a property acquisition for an early proposal for a project, so there is no recipient for that project listed. Um, and then one little error to clarify, number 36 is listed as a loan, and it should be a grant. It was money um, extended during the purchase and sale agreement to the owner for business relocation support. Um, I pulled some numbers in case you're interested. Top fives in Glenwood, top fives in downtown, top fives overall, and then totals for Glenwood and downtown as well. Uh, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions? All right, board member Pictionary.
So question on the, the SDC payments. Can you clarify, is there, is that actual cash, or is that actual financing, just financing or funding that goes to a certain place? And where's it from? Is it actual money, or is it just on books money?
Yes, great clarification. Um, that money is not paid by the applicant. Instead, CETA has a bill that they owe to the city. Um, that SDC cost is backfilled. That cost doesn't go unpaid for. It becomes a bill from CETA to the city, instead of a bill from the applicant to the city, so that cost is covered just by CETA.
So those are actual CETA costs. Okay, and you're gonna give us the top five or top three of those, those recipients?
Sure. Um.
Speaking.
Sorry. Um, top five overall by recipient is Blue McKenzie LLC, Alco 501 LLC, JM Hotel LLC, Smithworks Properties LLC, which is a property transaction, a sale, and then DHRU LLC. Um, three of those five were in Glenwood. Uh, top five for downtown, uh, and these are total quantities provided of support. Uh, Blue McKenzie LLC, Smithworks Properties, again, that property transaction, that sale, uh, Par Lumber, Masaka Properties LLC, and Swallow Till Spirits with their business loan. And then top five for Glenwood include a couple we've heard already. Um, Alco 501 LLC, JM Hotel LLC, DHRU LLC, Ramsey Weight slash Karatko LLC, and Wildish Industrial Development Corporation. And just for fun, uh, the total invested in downtown is $4 million. $4 million and $6,825. Um, and then the total invested in Glenwood is $1,552,240.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I, I have a question. How much has CETA actually spent for acquisition of all the properties in downtown Springfield and all in Glenwood? Cause I wanna remind people that this money is from the property owners within the urban renewal area. It's not federal money or city money. It's from the property owners. That is their money that we are responsible for, and uh, hopefully they're gonna get a better community because of it. It's going pretty slow. I support it, but I wish it would go faster.
I don't have the information handy, but I'm happy to collect it. Yeah.
Go ahead. Hey, thank you for the information. Is there any way to look at the ROI on that, like what, what you're spending versus what we're getting in return? Or what the areas are getting in return in terms of tax, you know, benefit or, you know, business stuff like that?
Yeah, I think so. Um, I'm like stewing over some graphs in my head to think of the best way to present it. Do you have any particular measures you'd like us to look at?
Um, I don't know. I mean, that would be, it would good, just be good to know what kind of benefit that has come back to the city. So you, you listed some numbers there just for fun, and that has been spent, and so I'm saying, okay, if you spent $4 million, then what did we see over that time period in terms of either a tax revenue, or um, a business that's still in business that's providing, you know, that's, that's flourishing and doing well, that type of thing, comparing it to like how many businesses that we, which I think I remember, a lot of these were still in business. They're still, you know, it wasn't like half and half. There's quite a few of them that are still up and going, which is fantastic. So I'd just kinda like to see how much, you know, is coming back.
Absolutely. I think a property tax measure is something we could look into.
Okay.
And I am remembering, uh, whenever we looked at the CETA SDC costs, all of those businesses were still active, actively in the use, that I'm assuming the SDC infrastructure was um, installed to support. So that's another good measure we could look into too.
Joe?
Yes, thank you. So I guess one of the reasons why I asked for this information originally too is that there was public comment a while back stating that there was no monies invested in certain companies around here, and I wanted to see if there actually was. Number one, because I thought it sounded as though we were not being fair or being equal to everybody that, that is um, wanting to take advantage of the, of the tax increments, or just not tax increments, but the uh, our agency or the development. So, that all being said, this is part of showing the public, this whole graph is showing the public of all the different places that have had it taken advantage of our programs, or especially our SDC programs. But I wanted to see too, is that it seems like there was a lack of transparency and process on how those decisions were made and, and how we got there, and I'm wondering too now, is through conversations in different meetings, is that we're currently, or correct me if I'm wrong, we're currently working on a very specific process, so a person can come in and, and knows the process, it's sitting in front of them, fill in the blanks, and, and go from point A to point B without any guesswork, without any emails, or any, anything that's like a, the good old boy's handshake thing going on. I wanna make sure that we have a process that's, that's equal for, for specific groups, cultures, et cetera, equally, we have that going.
Um, back in January, we talked about you all's interest in setting up a process for catalytic projects, so um, that will be coming back to you sometime this late winter, early spring. Um, I also just love to remind us all that uh, we have ElCog as a minute taker, which is a great way to capture decisions made in meetings. And with the extension of the CETA SDC program in Glenwood and downtown, we will have a very simple application for folks to fill out, so we can best accurately track these investments over time. Um, I'm hopeful to bring you all updates on the CETA SDC program once a year.
Thank you. Appreciate answering those questions.
Any other questions or comments? I wanna thank you for doing this, and I know it took a lot of time and revision, and I really appreciate the map, and you said what I was gonna ask for, so that's great. Cause I would love to see us just continue to build on this, um, and looking at it once a year and seeing where things are going, and and um, as we lean into that process, it's gonna be exciting to see new developers and, and see how we um, can make that happen. Okay, thank you, and next item.
Two downtown negotiating agreement. Ally Camp is here for this item as well.
Hi, everyone. Uh, today we are here to talk about next steps for the exclusive negotiating agreement with the Motors LLC. Uh, we first discussed this in September of '23, so last fall. Um, you're seeing in your packet a letter of intent versus an exclusive negotiating agreement today. Um, that letter of intent highlights two changes that I wanna bring to your attention. Um, first, the reason for a different format of document. The owner would like the ability to accept offers on the property during the negotiating period, should an interested party arise. And should an interested party arise, uh, CETA would then have a right of first refusal with similar terms. So that changes the exclusivity of the agreement with the owner identified. Um, next, the owner has included uh, language to receive an appraisal if we conduct one, and we've also included language in there that if they conduct an appraisal, we will also receive that. Um, I just wanna kinda make a note of a reminder of why we're looking at this property, since we talked about it a while ago. Um, this property in your map, in your packet, is adjacent to a property that CETA now owns, 740 H Street. This was the site of the former
This was the site of the former Blue McKenzie Building. Um, in understanding that building and its development and its uh success, we know that that site is constrained. We know that um acquisition of land or assembly of land will make a development project at that site more successful. Uh, this is the land directly adjacent to it that we're talking about for this letter of interest. So an investment or a discussion of an investment in this property can better support success at the development site that SITA owns currently. Um, just a couple of other notes. Um, since the packet has come out, we've received some small edits on the letter of interest intent um from the owner's legal team. None of the proposed changes are substantive. Um, some of them indicate um termination or extensions in writing, which writing is always good. Um, and then a small indemnification clause during due diligence period if we're on their property. Um, so I would like to add uh to the uh action requested substantially in this form um as it moves forward. Um, just a note, two next steps, should the board determine to proceed. Um, we'll have 90 days to complete due diligence, and there's two extensions of 90-day periods in there. Um, and staff will return to the board with findings from this due diligence period for your direction.
Okay, we've got some ear folks here. Who'd like to go first? Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. I just wanna make, uh, clarify my head. You got, your, your, looks like you got two tracks here. One is to modify the letter, and the other one is to basically acquire the property. Is that correct?
We will enter into an agreement first, and then we'll decide on acquiring the property.
Okay, so that's for, that's a different conversation, but your proposal here is to move forward on going that direction?
Yes.
Okay, I'm happy with that.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair. Quick question on the property that we're looking at. We're looking at two parcels, is my understanding, which is the old Buick lot of the Buick building. My question is, is that building sacred enough on the historic rolls that that's not gonna be a building that is potentially, hate to even say the word, cause I might get emails, be torn down and redeveloped into something else. Is that off the table for that, or where is that in, in relation to our offer here?
Um, Sam has done some research on the National Historic Registry. Thank you, Sam. Um, there are no limiting conditions on buildings on the National Register. They just need to be documented if changes occur to them.
I guess my question more specifically was the building cannot be torn down. Is that correct?
I will need to follow up on that information, unless Sam has his hand up behind me.
Come on up, Sam.
A nice, safe topic. So, uh, looking into Shippensburg, great, looking into Shippensburg, they do allow complete teardowns if needed. However, they want to be a part of the conversation, and they wanna find ways to memorialize what was there and what is going there. Uh, Springfield is a wonderful museum. They highly encourage museum partnerships to create exhibits about what was space was. Um, so we're quite aligned there very well, I feel like.
Not that that's the way I'm leaning for the public's output, but we, we just had to be that clear. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so you need a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to approve or not approve the adjustment in terms for the agreement uh with uh the Motors LLC.
Do we need to decide if we're gonna approve it or not to prove it?
Oh.
We can't do both.
Okay, so to approve. I'm just reading it straight from the card. The, it's my first time. To approve uh the adjustment in terms for the agreement with the Motors LLC.
I'll second that.
All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Uh, board member Van Gordon, board member Weber.
Yes.
Board member Mo.
Yes.
Chair Rodley.
Yes.
Board member Blackwell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Doyle.
Aye.
Board member Pictionary.
Yes.
And board member Lovell.
Aye. Rookie.
And it passes unanimously. And if I'm reading this correctly, we're adjourned, right? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.